Or at 11:02, we are recording as of this moment. And thank you all for being here. We will, we're here for the purpose of our regular meeting of the task force for the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. And we will start off with public comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak and address the task force, this is the time to do so. This is not the time for presentations. We will get to that on the agenda shortly. But if there are members of the public wishing to address the task force, they could do so at this time by raising their hand on the WebEx app. Any members of the public wishing to speak? Right, seeing none, give it another moment. Any other, any members of the public wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close public comment. And before we get into our presentations, we just have approval of minutes for the May 11th, 2022 regular meeting and the June 20, excuse me, June 2nd, 2022 special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you very much. Was that Cynthia Clegg that made that motion and Councilman Piscina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'll abstain because I wasn't at the June 2nd meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Matter passes unanimously with one abstention from Christina Heckert. And at this time, we will move on to new business. And we'll try to maximize our time here for the presentations. We have four applications that we'll be presenting before us today. After that, we will have a review of pending applications. And I will, I will note at the top that at our council meeting last, and I'll just ask if everybody could please keep themselves on mute. At our last council meeting, which was on Monday, we approved all, we are, we have, we're now caught up at the councilmatic level, all of the applications that have been approved by the task force have also now been validated by the common council. And we are working on getting those funds out to the recipients as we speak. So the wheels are turning. Appreciate all the time and effort that the task force has put into this. And we have some more great applications to hear from today. So just to sort of go over quickly, the ground rules. In order, we will have, we will hear from Connecticut Home Collective, P L L C, followed by Middlesex Redemption Center, followed by 206, Inc., followed by the Downtown Business District. Each presentation, each applicant will have 15 minutes to present. If you have slides or anything that you need to share on your screen, we can provide the ability for you to do so. We've had a number of presentations that have either been, had slides as components and others that have just been, the groups talking about the application and walking through the, walking through with the working group. So we'll ask for those to be 15 minutes. I will keep track of time. We'll have some time for questions. And then following the presentations, all of the, the application materials, including the presentations, will be reviewed thoroughly by the task force so that we can make a funding decision. So that is, that is how this is going to work. Does anybody have any quick questions before we get underway? All right, well, thank you. So without further ado, we will start with our presentation by Connecticut Home Collective, P L L C. And I will turn it over to their team for, for their presentation and let us know if you need screen sharing privileges.
If someone could give me screen sharing privileges, I'd be great.
Great.
Should be good to go.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for being here. Welcome to our presentation for Foundations, which is Fair Housing Education Curriculum, but with a restorative approach. And as we today will explain more on why we use this technique to partner with fair housing education. Right? So I'm, let me get my notes, sorry about this. Asha, I guess I didn't do my notes for that. I'm Sasha. I am, I was born in Middletown and lived here most of my life on and on, give a couple of years. My most important role is as mother to my five children, wife to my husband. I'm also daughter to Ronnie Yvonne Armstrong, who guide all the work I do and are, they're really my foundation and everything. And Diana's here as well, if she'd like to introduce herself a little bit.
Yes, hi, my name is Diana Martinez. I have lived in Middletown since I came here to attend Wesleyan in 2005. I'm now raising two children here. And I work at Wesleyan now as the Associate Director of the Dewitt Center for Community Partnerships. And I work at the Middletown Racial Justice Coalition. Hang on a second, Sandra is requesting to annotate the shared content. I'm just going to approve that real quick. Okay. So I also work at the Middletown Racial Justice Coalition as a racial justice facilitator and D E I educator. Community engagement is, is my thing. And we'll move to the next slide. What's just happened, but let me try. Give me a second. I've lost somehow the. Okay, got it, sorry.
No problem. All right.
Go ahead, Sasha.
All right, so before we start with, with what the curriculum will, will be sharing with our participants, we, we do want to take a moment to acknowledge that, you know, this is about housing and land. And we should take a moment to acknowledge that we are all on stolen land. And that will be part of the way we start all our presentations is just acknowledging Indigenous people and acknowledging that we were all on stolen land to begin with. And, you know, that we are working on developing languages, a community, to heal those things and as well as acknowledge them and, and have the cultural competent language to be able to break down these systems that, that are in play. The curriculum is for all community. But yes, our commute, our focus is on Black communities' experiences with fair housing. The metaphoric foundation for Black-owned real estate was laid with racism, opportunity hoarding, bank fraud, predatory lending, land theft, blockbusting, and redlining, which is all vocabulary that we want our participants to become one with and familiar with because we feel that that's part of the healing is being well-versed in the language of discrimination. Also, just so you can identify it when you've been a victim of it. And fair housing, the Fair Housing Act was born after the murder of Martin Luther King. And we honor Black folks in this curriculum because obviously, fair housing justice was born out of our suffering. So we, we do understand that the wider the appeal is for this curriculum, the more opportunity we have to reach a larger audience, which is our ultimate goal. We want to expand our, our ability to be better neighbors and be better community to each other. And that includes learning, listening, including multiple voices for more inclusive conversation and focusing on expanding our, our human potential, which is really the ability to, you know, perform as your highest self, which we're hoping this, this, this curriculum will help with that. Now, I spoke about my family a little bit, and now I'm just going to give you a little background on my professional, my professional background. I'm a licensed Connecticut Realtor with William Pitt Sotheby's. My credentials include, I'm an accredited buyer rep. I'm a gold level agent. And I recently just won Best of Hartford in the individual Realtor category and just completed my At Home with Diversity certification, which is that little, little house, colorful house at the bottom of the slide. That Home with Diversity certificate is a national designation that provides, you know, real estate education, but elevates my skills in dealing with diverse populations, which I kind of already have that as a member of a diverse population, as a Black woman. But more importantly, it goes over how fair housing can affect the real estate marked market and access to home ownership for marginalized populations. So now we're going to move on, oh, sorry. I did not go over our pillars. Our pillars for Foundation are Heal, Learn, Act. So the curriculum is divided into these three pillars. And going on to the next slide, Diana is going to introduce you into our, our Heal pillar, which we think is the most important language of our curriculum. So Diana, if you want to take over from there?
Yeah, so as Sasha mentioned, the first pillar in our program is healing. And if the end goal is getting folks into homeownership or getting folks into a situation where they can access fair renting properties in Middletown, the first thing we have to do is be honest about all of our feelings and our intentions around seeking housing, getting credit approval, getting ready to start the process of purchasing a home. And for a lot of us, there are a lot of feelings packed into that and a lot of history as well. The most important takeaway that we want participants to leave with after having facilitated this, this part of the training is about releasing some of the negative stigma that's born out of our own home stories, right? Folks can share as much or as little as they want of their own stories as they'd like throughout the workshop. But the foundation will be that slavery, racism, segregation, and integration have been deeply traumatic for Black folks, in particular, for all folks of color in general. And research shows us what we already know to be true, that the body keeps the score. And this means that trauma is passed on from generations to generation. And that's easy to do, especially easy when, when that trauma is codified in our legal and systemic practices over generations, until inequity just becomes the way things have always been, right? And then they feel like a natural, where it feels like a natural situation that Black homeownership in Middletown is notorious of ridiculously low in comparison to white homeownership, or that most of us are renting and have issues with, with affording rent in town. Foundation seeks to support participants in developing the tools for digging deeper within ourselves and with others about our collective history, how we got to a place of such deep housing inequity, and how we can work towards building the individual and collective understanding that's necessary to challenge that status quo, that thing that's always been. So our housing system didn't just happen, it was designed this way. The concept of credit scores didn't always exist, that was created. People of color don't just happen to live in the same kinds of communities, that's intentional design. And so our workshop presents that history and walks participants of color through their own histories to sort of assuage some of that guilt and that pressure and the shame associated with not having access to the, what we call the American dream. So we'll share space together and discuss how our housing system was set up to keep us divided. And we'll also dream up what a shared housing vision could be that's welcoming to all folks in community. And this might be an example, this is an example of one of our slides. Well, as part of our workshop, we'll talk about the migration patterns of folks of color from slavery to reformation to modern immigration patterns. For those of us who were brought here or who, who were immigrated here, there's a pattern of wanting that's, that's always just sort of out of reach. We want better, we want our own spaces, we want freedom, we want opportunity, we want that quote unquote, "American dream." So in our workshop, we'll talk about what is the American dream? What does that mean? And how does the idea that working hard will one day pay off and you'll be able to purchase your own home with a white picket fence? How did that idea come about? And we'll talk about how that was actually the result of 1930s New Deal legislation and the 1950s housing boom that in large part excluded non-white people. So we'll link that to modern-day banking and realty practices that continue to keep that dream just out of reach for so many of us. Our participants will journal about what their housing experiences have been since childhood, what their parents' housing experiences were like. And we'll also journal about what our housing dreams could be or how we could reimagine that American dream in a way that actually works for us. And then we'll also talk about the shift in language that explicitly coded, from language that explicitly coded communities by race and labeled some communities as all-white and some communities as not, to redlining and language like high opportunity versus low opportunity, which is all coded language that means basically the same thing, right? So we'll discuss what those words really mean. And more importantly, we'll discuss how we've internalized those meanings and related them to our own self-worth and to perceptions of who we are as people. So we'll dig into the, how the idea of the American dream portrays those of us who were denied access or whose communities were labeled low opportunity and were treated as such, as lazy or irresponsible or like bad creditors, right? As, at the same time, as it legitimizes the privilege and the superiority of those for who the system was created and who access to the system was, for who access to the system was facilitated through bank loans, Realtors that were showing you opportunities and spaces that others were not, were not available to others, et cetera. So we'll also be journaling and talking about the pressure and the guilt and the, and work through some of that shame and releasing some of that as folks enter a process where they can look more pragmatically at their credit situation. And they can look at these things not as a reflection of who they are as people, but as tools that have been built to keep us out and as things that can be shifted in real ways without feeling that guilt of, as like if you're just been making bad choices your whole life. And now we'll talk about the next pillar.
Okay, so the second pillar of the Foundation's curriculum is Learn, which is where we, we use our journal. Our journal will also come with a glossary of, of real estate definitions that are going to be an important part of, of the education. And also a brief history on fair housing and also some resources, some suggested reading, and a list of, of sort of housing stakeholders and assets within the community. We, we know that after the assassination of Dr. King, the Civil Rights Act of 1968 was passed, which also brought us Title VIII, which is now known as the Fair Housing Act. And that prohibited the discrimination against people of color in, in housing. But we, we often put the focus on that instead of acknowledging part of the reason why that had to be done is the government's role in discrimination. The federal government, local government, state, they all had a role in the redlining, in, in robbing communities of color of financing. These are all important and impactful stories that need to be part of our, our vocabulary and part of our day-to-day understanding. One, mostly because it's still happening. We, we have to look at the fact that the, we're in an affordable, we're in affordability crisis on the rental level as well as home buying, and we have some more data on that. The 30-point disparity between Black and white homeownership that was in place in 60s when it was legal for, for folks to discriminate against Black people, it's, it's the same disparity now. It's still at this 30-point gap. And it hasn't changed. And it has gotten significantly worse after the last real estate crisis, where Black people are the subgroup that has not rebounded because we're so hard-hit with predatory lending and with land loss. And it's traumatizing. It's traumatizing when you see generation after generation migrating, looking for home, planning routes, digging them back up to go to the next place and still never really, again, as Diana mentioned, like, is this American dream really for us? We believe with this, with this curriculum and with this outreach to community, Middletown can be a national model of how we can change this data. But we have to be willing to, to look at what we do have and, and be, and be excited about looking at this data. If we move on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because we only have, we have one minute left, Sasha. So I'm going to go to the slide about what the actual funds will be used for.
Sure.
So our, our proposal was to run 15 sessions a year of our Fair Housing Education Curriculum, the Foundation's curriculum, for free to prioritize in low and moderate income people of color in Middletown. And we'll offer translation in Spanish as well, or groups in Spanish as well, if folks need that. And then we'll offer an additional three sessions a year for Middletown Realtors or landlords and municipal or organizational stakeholders who are interested in learning about the advocacy elements of how to support folks looking for fair housing opportunities or how to support fair housing legislation. We'll also be talking to folks about the creation of the Fair Housing Commission, which is now happening, going to happen in Middletown, and making sure that we are creating a fair housing commission that actually does what we need folks to do here in town and that actually prioritizes the renters in Middletown. So our 15 sessions a year will cover that. And the funds from, the funds from the ARPA funds will support that initiative. Yes, our end goal is for creating spaces that will have cross-sector community engagement that touches communities that are often ignored or just omitted or folks think that renter communities in Middletown are transient, and that's untrue. There are folks here who have been in renter communities for generations and generations. We hope to educate leaders and community stakeholders on the importance of healing our home story and on these exercises that we're offering. And then we hope to empower community to inspire change by providing a toolkit for housing advocacy and a way to manage that or navigate that for communities, for community members. And that, yeah, I know, you can take the last slide, Sasha.
Okay, um, yes, fair housing is all, all things. Really, really quickly, if we could just look at slide 13, I think it's an important just piece of data that everyone should see where the, the growth in Black housing ownership between 35 to 64 is at a 41%, but it jumps, it doubles to 78% for age 65 and up. That is so significant. We need to be looking at that data. And we need to be looking at how we can bring homeownership to the Black community at a younger age so we actually can develop some generational wealth within our community. And I feel like we can do this here in Middletown. We just have to look at this data and want to use it and, and, and act. So thank you for your time. Sorry, we didn't get to hit everything.
Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. And, you know, just, I know we've got lots to talk about. But do we have any questions for Diana and Sasha? We'll go first to Brianna.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Can you speak to any past sessions that you've run? And how many times this training has been conducted or is this new training?
I can answer that. It's in, I've been doing it for probably at least a year, but in not, not using this full format. Like I, since, I would say since about 2020 during the pandemic, as I started using Zoom as a way to communicate with first-time buyers, I started doing first-time buyer presentations. And when I was dealing with communities of color, I did start to notice an extreme level of trauma that was unpacking that was connected to their home story and their family. And it just made me feel like I needed to do more as a real estate agent because real estate agents were some of the bad actors that also have recreated this racial segregation. So I, I feel like I can connect those first-time home buyer presentations to this curriculum. And it has increased, at least on a local level. I have a very diverse portfolio of buyers and they're still in their homes. And they, they got through the process, they got a home. There's, it's sustainable and I believe, you know, we're on to something.
Thank you so much for answering.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other quick questions for Sasha or Diana? All right, Kevin, followed by Christina.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Sasha and Diana. Just the question as far as what, what's your, you know, what's the outcome you would like to see from, from these sessions? Is it, is it, you know, advocacy or policy change? Or is it actually will be helping people navigate the real estate system to, you know, make it easier for them to get in a home?
Yes, so it's all of that, so.
Okay, I probably answered my own question.
Yeah, we, we recognize that, for instance, I've taken a number of first-time home buyer courses. And, and I took them at points where I definitely was not ready to purchase a home. We recognize that a lot of folks are not there yet, right? And won't be there for a bit. But that doesn't mean that we can't lay that foundation down and help people get there eventually. And so our goal is to walk as many people through as possible through the curriculum and, and help them connect with financial consultants that we might know in the area, help them sort of build that confidence and skill. And as they're doing that, also have them advocate for fair housing policy and for legislation that makes it easier for them to eventually own a home. There will be some of us who are ready, who have the funds on hand, who are ready to take that step. And there'll be a lot more folks who are not there yet, but who can work towards making it easier for themselves and for other people to get there eventually. And I don't know if I missed anything, Sasha.
Yeah, and we're, we're also going to be going over like safe housing for renters. That, that we're, we know that homeownership isn't for everyone. And also, if, if, if homeownership communities, communities where the majority of the people are, are owned are predominantly white, that also is a drawback for, for Black buyers. There's a complexity of, okay, if I want to move into this neighborhood, you know, and I'm the only person of color, is, is this a safe space for me? And then you, on the other end of that, if we have these, these communities that are divided between low opportunity and high opportunity, and low opportunity tends to be full of people of color. So I have to go to places where the schools are lower performing and that crime is going to be higher if I want to be in a community of color. That's not a fair choice. So we're, we're looking at all of that. But we also, my point is that we, we are also putting a focus on, on renters and making sure that they have safe access to housing and sustainable housing as well.
And I would also add that we also hope to create a network of landlords and small-level landlords who are interested in thinking through these issues and being identified as safer rental spaces for folks that we can refer those folks who come to us looking for housing to as folks who've walked through our curriculum and who have a better understanding of what it means to rent to folks of color, to rent to low-income folks. Ideally, you know, as renters, you have to fill out all sorts of applications in order to apply to live in a space. But you don't actually have to do anything to become a landlord other than own a space and put it up on Craigslist for rent, right? I would like eventually to see a space where landlords have to walk through this, a training like this in order to be able to rent their spaces. But I know that's not possible. So I think for now, we can start a collective of self-selected folks who are interested in learning more about how to be better property owners and property managers. And then we can create a cohort of folks to refer our clients to.
Thank you. I, I would love to see the rest of those slides. I don't know if you would want, if you can share those, if you want to either, you can email it to myself or even the mayor. I'll put my email address in the, in the chat. If we, if you send those to Brig as well, we'll make sure that they get to the entire task force.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, we'll go next to Christina. And if we could keep the answer to about 30 seconds, that would be great because we've got a packed agenda here and we've got to move through. So Christina.
The good news is I had the same question as Kevin. So thank you for your presentation, Sasha and Diana.
Thank you.
Great. Phil, can it be answered in 30 seconds?
Yeah, I think so. Two, two, two questions. Beyond the, the Black population, there's, as you know, Middletown is a very diverse community of marginalizedization of persons of income, et cetera. My first question is, how are you going to market it in the neighborhoods? And secondly, will it be presented in a holistic manner to the marginalized populations, not only just to the Black population?
Yeah, so our research shows that the highest-growing populations in Connecticut that are immigrant populations are Jamaican, Dominican, Ecuadorian, and Central American folks. are Jamaican, Dominican, Ecuadorian, and Central American folks. And so, um, like, like I mentioned in our presentation, we will have a version of those training that's facilitated by me in Spanish and translated by folks for people, uh, who speak Spanish. Um, and we are also including the history of immigration patterns, um, as part of our curriculum of understanding how folks got here, why they come here, and about the creation of the American dream. In terms of outreach, uh, both Sasha and I have fairly, fairly solid connections with communities of color in Middletown. Um, recently hosting a, uh, series of focus groups for the NAACP for Latino populations on, uh, health outcomes, and have developed a network of, uh, connections within, with that community. Um, and I think, Sasha, I don't know what, if you want to say anything about, uh, else about outreach in terms of how we'll be putting things out.
Yeah, we're already partnering with Liberty Bank to get out the word on some of their loan products that are, uh, targeted to communities of color. And we'll also work with, there's, there's eight different affordable housing, uh, locations within Middletown. We will work with, within the community, we'll work with, uh, some of them are unionized, so we'll, we'll work with those tenant associations. Um, we are going to be the bridge between government and community. We just put out an affordable housing plan, uh, to the governor that did not have any racial demographics. And it's because we do not have a bridge to the community. We don't have a reliable community engagement arm that is going to get to populations that need funding, that need services, and that's a problem. So, yeah, reaching out to the community is why we're here. This is all born out of wanting to, to do this work in an effective way within the community and with the community.
I would also add that we, we don't, um, expect this to work overnight, right? And I think what this foundation is trying to lay is the trust, uh, that's necessary to build, to build towards that. So we find that if people, if we can approach people as human beings and sort of eliminate some of the personal guilt that's built up into this process, and connect them with people that they know that they can trust, that will eventually sort of build up a base where folks say, okay, y'all are credible, trustworthy people that we can tell are, are most. Financial information is probably much more private than people's, a- anything that, uh, people hold private and, and dear, right? Nobody wants to open up their books and show folks, um, what their money looks like. And I think we, we need to build a base of, like, trust, particularly with communities that are, uh, have good reason not to be trustful, um, and make sure that we can work towards that.
Yeah, one, um, one bridge, if I may, Mayor, that, that you should consider is the ministerial alliance. They bridged our health, uh, uh, equity, uh, in, um, situation that we had in the city. So, that's your biggest bridge to all populations marginalized, marginalized, because, uh, Reverend Anderson, uh, does a great job, so I would recommend that. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, uh, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Sasha and Diana, again, for the presentation, and, uh, we do have to move on in our agenda here, but if people have follow-up questions, um, send them to myself and Brig, and we will make sure that they get relayed, um, uh, as we go through the next portion of this process, uh, as, as the, as the task force reviews the application, and we'll make sure to get those slides out, um, to everybody as well, if you can send those along. So, um, thank you very much, uh, and thank you for the questions. And, uh, without, uh, further ado, you're free, free to stick around or, or jump off, uh, whatever your preference. Um, and we'll move on next to our, uh, next presentation, which is Middlesex Redemption Center. So, um, if there's somebody here from their team who wants to, uh, get underway, just let us know if, um, if we need to share, uh, screen sharing privileges with you. Thank you very much.
Hi, Mayor, this is Steve Gomes. Um, I live at one-seventy Clover Street. I've lived in Middletown for thirty-eight years. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to present today. Um, I do not have any slides. I'm just going to really give a brief overview of what I've presented in my application. You know, out of respect for the time and trying to make sure we keep moving this along. Um, what I'm asking for is a hundred thousand dollars to open a can-and-bottle redemption center, um, something that the city of Middletown does not have right now. Uh, first and foremost, what we did before we submitted the application is we made sure that it met the overall objective of the grant. And the three points that we cover are aid to impacted industries, it addresses an effect on a local government service, and it's a removal of a public health hazard. During the pandemic, recycling was impacted. In fact, the governor deemed redemption centers as an essential service. And as I mentioned before, Middletown does not have one. During the pandemic, residents paid fees with limited ability to redeem the bottles and cans. If you remember during the pandemic, a lot of the stores closed their facilities because of sanitation reasons, and they were also having trouble getting employees, so they were stocking shelves. As a result, the city's recycling center saw a significant increase in can-and-bottle disposal, uh, raising the cost to the city overall. I actually have a support letter from Kim O'Rourke and Chris Holden, um, who acknowledged this issue. Uh, Kim O'Rourke is the recycling coordinator. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look through my application, but it specifies a lot of the, uh, challenges of not having a center, which I'm going to reference today. Also, with fewer can-and-bottles recycled and a reduction in recycled material, the vendors were forced to make more cans and bottles, which led to an overall negative impact on the environment with greenhouse gases, air quality, et cetera. I planned to open the facility at the R. M. Keating Enterprise Park. I worked previously with, uh, Joe Semolus on getting a lease. And an important comment about that is it's actually in the environmental justice zone, which, for those of you who don't know, I'll read the definition. It's defined as a United States Census block group, as determined in accordance with the most recent United States Census, for which thirty percent or more of the population consists of low-income persons who are not institutionalized and have an income below two-hundred percent of the federal poverty level. So this is being put in that, uh, particular zone. It will be adjacent to the current city recycling center. So as people are bringing stuff through the recycling center, they can take a right and go over and recycle their cans. It's important to note right now that with the recent bottle bill expansion, the number of containers that are marked for, uh, deposit are going to increase significantly. So as of January first, twenty-twenty-three, sports bottles, uh, Gatorades, iced teas, and so on, are all going to be included as, uh, they're all, they're all going to get a fee when you go and buy them at the store now. Uh, the other thing that's going to hit is on January first, twenty-twenty-four, the fee increase is from five cents to ten cents. That means that when you buy a twelve-pack of soda or a twelve-pack of beer or something, you're going to pay a dollar twenty um, on top of that to cover the cost of the cans and bottles. Both of these actions are forecasted, uh, by DEP to increase the demand by thirty percent and, and will incent people to recycle more. So it just gives to the fact that we really have a demand for this, um, in the, uh, in the city. By definition, uh, redemption centers take all products, while stores are only required to take products that they sell. So for instance, if you go to Stop &amp; Shop, they'll take your Stop &amp; Shop brands, but they won't, they might not take Walmart or ShopRite or any other brand. They'll take the large distributors like Coke and Budweiser and so on, but there's a limitation to what they will take in there. The redemption centers are required by law to take all bottles and cans that are eligible for redemption. Right now, there are forty-three million containers in Middletown and the surrounding towns. And you might ask why I use that number of, and surrounding towns. Between Middletown and Portland, there are approximately seventy-two thousand people. And that's the number that is used to say the area that you can support a redemption center. So, that's why I have surrounding towns in there, and if you look at my application, I said it supports more than Middletown. As I mentioned, there is a high demand. People are asking for it in the city. And again, I'll reference the, uh, letter that, uh, Kim O'Rourke and Chris put in that said that people are asking for this in the city. Um, the other thing I did is I also got some residents who've contacted me, and I have a letter of support from Jeff Meyer. He actually is the president of Cans for a Cause, and he gets about six-hundred thousand cans this year, a year. And he actually brings them to East Hartford, so he has to rent a truck and travel all the way to East Hartford. There are several other groups who acknowledge that they would do more recycling efforts, but there's not a location in Middletown where they can get them to. When we do implement it, the city will see a reduction in disposal fees. Uh, landfills will be cleaner, litter will be picked up, and again, the environmental justice zone will benefit. Currently, there are no redemption centers in the Middletown, even down to the shoreline. The closest one is in Wallingford, West Hartford, and New Britain. And I've researched each one of those. Each one of them handles approximately twelve million containers a year. And they're projected to go to fifteen million after the bottle bill, um, change on January, um, first of twenty-twenty-three. And it may go even higher when people realize that they're paying ten cents versus five cents. Speaking to residents in the community, one of the major, major reasons people do not recycle is the time that it costs when you go to a store to stick in each can individually, and the number of times they go in, the reverse vending machines are broken or not available. And then if you look at a place like Walmart in Cromwell, as big as that is, and the millions of cans that they sell, they have three machines. Um, the other area that I'd like to try to make sure we do when I, when I, uh, open this is we want to make it convenient for seniors. So, I have a number of outreach efforts where we can possibly go to the senior center and make it easier for the seniors. There's nothing, um, more discouraging than seeing seniors in there pushing their cans in there. What I plan to do in our facility is to just count the cans and do all the sorting and the recycling for them. They don't have to do it individually. You bring me the cans, you tell me how many you have, I give you the money. Or if you haven't counted them, there's a machine that I'm looking at where you drop them in, it counts them, tells me how many, and I give you the money. And we want to make it a simple, convenient, quick process so that people will keep coming back and encourage them to recycle more. Um, what I'm going to do with the hundred thousand dollars is I'm going to hire employees. And, uh, that's the basis for my request. I've, uh, I've outlined in my report how it will help the community. I'm looking to make sure that we look in the north-end area around the environmental zone to make sure we offer employment in those areas. And, um, hopefully you'll see my, uh, application here is it meets all the requirement, and you can meet it. Thanks for your time, and if you have any questions, let me know. I'm here to answer them.
Right, uh, thank you very much. Uh, Steve, any questions, uh, from the task force? Any question, uh, Kevin?
Hey, Steve, this sounds like a great, uh, project. Um, I, I'm glad you mentioned, um, Cans for a Cause, because I know, uh, I agree, I too, I hate going to the grocery store to drop off my cans because the machines are always broken. So, I, I usually give all mine to, uh, uh, to Jeff with Cans for a Cause, and I know the money's going towards a good thing. Um, but just, uh, asking, uh, how like, how will you sustain this, uh, you know, after the initial, uh, you know, funding that you would get from the city? Like, do you take a certain percentage, uh, you know, to cover the costs of, you know, for the staff or something?
Yeah, so the way it works is, is initially, like I put in my application, I don't plan to pay myself. Uh, but the way, the way it works is for every can that gets submitted to me, I get three cents in revenue, so five cents, eight cents. I plan to use that revenue to continue to reinvest in the, in the program, in the project. Um, I'm also going to apply for a grant from the state and use my personal funds.
All right, thanks. Uh, any other questions? We'll go to Bobby next.
Hi.
Hello, I just have a question about the logistics. Like, how long are the cans, um, in the, in whatever space you end up renting and, and, um, you know, how long are they held in that area?
So, you have, so I have to work with all the different vendors to make sure they come and pick them up, but they usually pick them up weekly. Um, and I've also spoke to several of the, uh, distributors in the area to make sure that they're able to pick them up weekly. One of the benefits of the Keating Building is you can get the big trucks in there to get them out. Um, if you notice, one of the big requirements that the state has is you have to have access to the facility. And, um, but they'll be turning them over weekly, and I have an incentive to turn them over weekly so that I can get the three cents to continue to reinvest in the, in the project, but it's weekly.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, I'll go next to Gene Nosera.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Yes, does sound like a great project. The Keating Building is, um, uh, you talked about convenience. Uh, where, what's your ideal spot for this redemption center?
So the spot that Joe has, uh, had outlined for me, which I obviously need to speak to Bobby and, uh, Chief Kronenberger, is, um, right near the loading dock, so that we can get the, um, the trucks in so you can get them out as quick as possible. Um, it's the, it's, it's basically in the middle of the building, right near the loading docks. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the layout of it, but that's, that's where it is.
Okay.
Um, going to be located. It's not going to be disruptive to the, um, to the breweries who are on the other end. But, and that's what we, we talked through that whole process, because we would not want to disrupt the, the businesses that are there.
Yeah, convenience is everything. So, yeah, that's a good spot. Thank you.
Right, any other questions? Um, I guess I will ask one quick follow-up, sort of a follow-up question to, um, to, to Gene. Um, is, are there other, are there locations that you have, is, to what extent could this be, um, uh, shifted to different locations if there were different challenges at the site, uh, that?
Yeah, so one of the things that I'm trying to do, um, as I, you know, as, as part of my plan, is we want to set up satellite locations. If you, I've actually, uh, visited a site in Maine where they actually have the ability for people to, uh, they're like big UPS, uh, boxes or big mailboxes where people can actually scan a barcode, put their cans in, and then we could pay them through either PayPal, Venmo, or, um, or Cash App. So we're trying to, I've been looking at those different options. As a startup right now, it would be very difficult to finance that aspect of it. But I envision with the volume that we anticipate in the probably next twelve to eighteen months, I'll be able to start setting up some of those. The challenge you have, Mayor, is the cost of real estate. Commercial real estate is, you know, ten to twelve to fifteen dollars a square foot, and the cash flow and the revenue just don't support that. So I'm looking at other options and how to facilitate the collection of the bottles and cans and make it more convenient.
Got it. Thank you. Um, all right, question from Phil.
Yeah, just real quick, Steve, great presentation. We all need it. Um, you might consider checking with Chris Holden, uh, and, and Rook at, um, the areas where we now, um, have scrap, food scraps.
Yes.
Your locations, if you, and, and those are in areas where you could set up those, those satellite redemption things. So talk to her, because that, that's a good marriage. You can get rid of the food, and you can get rid of the cans.
Yeah, yeah, I've, um, been talking to Kim for about three or four months now, and
Wonderful.
very supportive of what we're trying to do here. The, the other thing that I, I have as part of our process is, um, you know, where, what, what demographics really, um, recycle cans? So, like I said, seniors do it, so I'd like to try to talk to the senior center. Um, the food pantry where people obviously need income, they might need something there. So I could schedule some times in locations that are convenient for people to actually recycle the cans, right? And that's the whole thing, is convenient, simple, and not having to stand there and take them in one by one. Uh, that's the objective of it, and I think that's what will, uh, make it a successful, um, effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for Steve? All right. Well, thank you very much, Steve. Um, we will, we will, uh, again, we'll look through this with our, uh, working group, and, uh, the task force will, will make a recommendation, and we're looking forward to talking with you soon.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Um, and, uh, without further ado, we'll keep things moving along. We're caught up a little bit here on time. Uh, and, uh, we'll turn it over next to Post Two-O-Six, uh, who is going to be our next presenter. So, uh, Two-O-Sixteen, we'll turn it over to you, and as always, if, uh, if you need sharing privileges, just let, uh, let us know.
Thank you, Mayor. Is, um, David Roan on the call?
Uh, it looks like he is, and David, if you were trying to talk, you're still muted, so you just got unmuted.
And I'll, I'll just start with, um, I believe you got our project, um, you know, multi-page, fifty-page project document. And if you didn't, we'd be happy to send that to everybody. We too, like Steve, did not do a formal presentation, um, honoring the time commitment that you have here. here. And before David gets started, I just want to say that our project can work hand in hand with the two very important projects that were presented today. Part of what we're going to talk about is minority and veteran needs, and housing is definitely part of that. What we're looking for is meeting space, which could benefit them. And then looking to what Steve presented for recycling, we have disabled veterans and people that could certainly support the workforce. And as you may know, Middletown Board of Education has the Transition to Life Center, and that's a popular working environment for those students who are looking for employment, something that they can easily do and support the community and, and feel like they're part of our community. So David, if you're ready, I'll transfer to you.
Your Honor, I'm, I'm on the phone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having us. And I'd like to just back up briefly to tell you how we got started. In 2008, three black veterans here in the city of Middletown got together. And a number of us had been talking about belonging to having a American Legion program. We realized that we weren't being asked by the American Legion and other veteran organizations within the city to, to join. So we applied to the National American Legion. And after some discussion, answering a bunch of questions of why we were formed, et cetera, the National Association, American Legion allowed us to start a post here in Middletown. One of the things I'd like to clear up right in the beginning, we are majority African American and other minority posts, but we are, we allow from day one, anybody that's a veteran who wants to join our post, post to join, no matter what the pigmentation of their skin is. We first started out, we met in the chamber, basement of the chamber for arm there. And then from there, we moved to Connecticut Valley Hospital, and that's where we held all of our American Legion meetings up until the pandemic. About two years, in 2011, we applied to the, the American Legion post, applied to the Kellogg Foundation for funds to purchase a property at that time we were looking at. We found out that we, we could not get the funds because we were, the American Legion posts are 501(c)(19), they are not 501(c)(03). And so we formed a 501(c)(3) nonprofit arm of the Harry Ruffin Jr. American Legion posts. At that point, all of our members were, that started the organization were members of the post. We, we got, we had to do the application twice, but we finally got recognized as a veteran's nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. What we did was, when we decided on the name, we kept the 206, that keeps the connection with Harry Ruffin Jr. Post 206. And again, we met up at the CVH because one of our vice commanders at the time was, had, was in management up there, and they allowed us to meet up there. It limited us to a lot of things that we could do. For instance, one way that we raised money is through selling dinners, having other activities like that. We could not do those types of things up there, all they allowed us to do was meet. So we continued looking for a place, and we have one, two, three, four, five times we have tried to, to get funds to, to purchase place. This is actually the sixth one that we're at now. And we, we, we decided that the best way to do it was to get funding such as, as the type of funding that's being allowed through your program, the rescue money. And, and also we applied to the state of Connecticut, and, and we applied to the city of Middletown, to the Common Council for funds. And we, we've been trying to do this now since, again, 2011 under our corporation. Christine, who's a board member, we also have Leslie Blazer with us, who's a board member, will talk about the property that we're now trying to purchase, which is the Old Tommy Pizza at 825 Saybrook Road, and, and the programs, et cetera, that we will be doing either that facility. Christine?
Thank you, David. So back on April 11th, 2019, the Common Council voted to support this endeavor with $260,000. It was enthusiastically supported by Councilman Nozera, Councilman Pocina, Councilman Faulkner, Councilwoman Bartolata Blanchard, Councilwoman Chisen, Reverend Cotton. And it's secured a vote of eight, I think, to three. So there was money put aside for this exact project. This group tried to support, get state funds to support that buy-in from the city. COVID happened, a lot went on with funding, a lot of things were put on hold. Senator Lesser is now working with us to get some state funds. He notified us that there was an influx of state funds that were being offered over the summer, and he felt that this project would be successful in getting some state funds. And then he's going to revisit it during the session to get additional funding, seeing to benefit that this could offer the community. So as David said, we're looking at Tommy's Pizza because it's available. I'm sure that Kevin Elak and the Health Department could tell you the status of the facility itself, as I'm sure they've inspected it when it was operating as a restaurant. To us, they're offering everything in the building, including their flatware, their, their silverware, their pots and pans, their kitchen, stoves, refrigerators, coolant, all of the things. So this project looks very appealing to us because there is not a lot of renovation that needs to happen to operate from day one. We're hoping to provide a facility that is similar to what the Moose and the Lodge can offer, a lower-cost banquet facility that can be used for sporting events, after services of funerals, religious celebrations. It can accommodate up to 200 people. There's 4,000 plus square feet upstairs and 4,000, a little rougher, space downstairs, which we certainly could offer to people like Sasha and Diana to be with clients. There's an office space, there's a meeting space, there's an additional kitchen downstairs, there's cold storage. It has a beautiful wooden deck, a 700 square foot wooden deck on the back. It has two facilities, one that could operate as a restaurant if we wanted to serve lunches the way the Elks does during the day, and then offer the meeting space where the bar area is off to the right, or you can open up the whole facility for a larger operation. We have great meeting spaces in Middletown. You look at Esca, Fiori's, Juicy Cajun, but those are restaurants where sometimes the expense is a little higher. We're looking at a population of veterans that, and low-income people that really can't afford to use that space, so this is an option for them. So we did give you the, the project specifications and the budget, and I'm happy to give you the, the bulk document, like I said. And we're asking for a million three to address the needs of this community with regard to assisting unemployed workers, providing household advice, and, and to build a stronger community. This city has done a phenomenal job to honor the veterans with a Veterans Memorial, the veteran celebrations that we have, the flag ceremony. But this is a, this is a space for them to grow and to meet and to make money through that banquet facility to expand their opportunities rather than just to be participants in citywide This has been a long time coming. One of the things that Lady Faulkner said in the minutes of that April 11th Common Council meeting is, this has been talked about for years. It's been talked about through the Black History Month operations. As Mary said, the veterans are more susceptible to diseases, PTSD, they're not a healthy group, poverty, homelessness, lack of transportation, poor education, underemployment. They don't have anywhere to go, and this would be housed by veterans such as David and his group to support the needs of these people and have them have somewhere to go to be supported, rather than going to a state agency or a federal agency where it's very time-consuming and limited in how they get their information. They need hands-on support from our community, and this is a place where they can do it. Downstairs offers all that opportunity for meeting space. So as I said, for funding, we have, we, we collect dues from the members. This would be a great place for us to expand that membership. Again, a place for somebody to go. If you join a group and, and they have nowhere to meet, what's the point of that? So this gives you a meeting place. We want to expand on our membership, we want to do outreach. We certainly would want to meet with Sasha and Diana to see what they could do to support our group, because this group is minority, and it is also veterans and families in the community. The purchase price is a million four. We know that the $260,000 that was committed in 2019 has some restrictions because it was more of a match, it was an assistance to get the state money. We're hoping to reinstate some of that support as well, as this is state and federal funding that we're looking for in addition to what we're here. We're going to the state with Matt Lesser, and he has already met with us and toured the facility and has offered his support. What we really need is somebody to take that first initial step and help us purchase that, that property. It's for sale now, it's in perfect shape, we're not building something new, the city knows what it is, it knows what it can do, it's operated as a banquet facility in the past, I've had many functions there myself. It's in an area where there's a strong minority population. So we're really asking the city to take the first step and take the initiative to support this group. I really don't have much more than that. If you have any questions, I could ask.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go to questions. Gene, is your hand up from the last question, or is that, I saw that during the presentation?
It's from the last question, I'll take that down.
Okay, great, then we'll go first to Bobby.
I was using my actual hand, because then I remember if it's up or down. So, so just for some clarification, because what I'm hearing from David is this is a not-for-profit that is separate from the Harry Ruffin Post 206, correct?
No.
So this is Post 206?
Yes.
And then, and it has the support of the current leadership of Post 206?
Yes.
Okay. But it'll be run as a not-for-profit?
Yes.
And who will be the paid staff?
If I could expand on that, the, the, what we learned back earlier was that all American Legion posts are nonprofits. What, what we, we got educated in was the difference between a, a 501(c)(19), which all American Legion posts are, and a 501(c)(3). And, and, and it's for that reason, if you contribute money to 501(c)(3), when you want tax deductions, et cetera, it, it's, it's can almost be 100%. Whereas to, if you gave it to an American Legion post, it, it, and you wanted to put it on your taxes, the, the difference in amount is, is, is a great amount, it's, it's a lot different. And again, like we learned through the Kellogg Foundation, we applied to the Ford Foundation, we've applied to a couple other foundations, and they all came back and told us the same thing. American Legion posts, you're a 501(c)(19), we only lend to 501(c), 501(c)(3). And so that's why we, we, we started applying for money through, through the corporation part of it. But again, I was a commander at the time for the, the first year that, that we applied for the 501(c)(3), I was commander, and then two other people were commanders. Then for the last six years, I was commander again. I've always been the chair of the corporation and the president of the corporation. We have 17 members on the corporation board. Of the 17 members, 11 of them are still members of, of the Harry Ruffin Jr. American Legion posts. The rest of them are, are, are veterans themselves, or such as Christine, her father was a veteran, her brother's a veteran, Leslie, her, her brother is a veteran. And so everybody in the corporation, when they ask to join, that's the first thing we ask. Are you, are you a veteran, or is somebody in your community a family of veterans?
And so I, I'm hearing that the building is 1.4. How many paid staff members do you anticipate having?
How many, I'm sorry?
Paid staff?
Right now, right now, it's going to be, all be done on, on a volunteer basis. And when it comes to running the banquet facility, we would do similar to, to the Elks Club and the Moose Club where they, they have a person that has the skills to run a facility, chef, and, and that's done on, on a contract basis. So in essence, we would have probably zero paid employees.
All right, thank you. We'll go next to Reverend Harville, followed by Councilman Pocina.
Thank you. I know this has been a project that's been going on for a long time. It has great support of the city and from state officials. And it's a good site, an excellent site on the corner there. And I know the building is in good condition because I was recently in it for a dinner, and surprisingly, they closed up. My question is though, is it on the market? Are you working with the owner in regards to purchasing it?
Yes, we are.
Yes, sir.
Is it on the market now?
Yes, we've met with the owners. There are two brothers, and they have a number of restaurants here in, in the state of Connecticut. And they have, when we explained to them who we were, one of the brothers is a veteran. And so they've been working diligently with us to give us the opportunity to, to raise the money. And we in fact have entered into, or have submitted a contract to them. And they're just waiting for us now to see who's the first person that's going to be able to come in and help us with the money to, to sell it to us.
All right, thank you. We'll go next to Phil.
Yes, David and Christine, in your presentation, it's a little different than what you presented two years ago. And the difference is, and personally, as a veteran, what kind of support, what kind of programming, other than meetings, other than banquets, are you going to provide to the veterans who Christine alluded to will need these services? Can you explain that?
Yes, thank you. Good question, Councilman. We will, we will be providing things such as, if a veteran has an alcohol drug problem, we will be providing them, and, and we And, and we have the ability now to direct them to, to the proper counseling, even to hospitalization. If need be, we, we would be providing help with employment. We, we have, through the American Legion, we have, we have organizations on, on the national level that, that helps us, that, that we can refer them to for that. Even when it comes down to, to education, we have a program called Boots to Teaching. And what Boots to Teaching does is, is say, you go into the military, you come out and you have, have the educational background. We have a program that we can actually help you, assist you in becoming a certified teacher with, with, within the school system. We would continue doing things like we, we have given food. We've gone out and raised and, and given food to the food pantry. We, 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 for a while there, we was assistant up at, at the, on Main Street with, with the homeless. By helping them, we'd seek out the veterans, those that are veterans, and, and we would lead them to to the various programs to help them get, get help. We also have a program where if a person went into the service and, and came out and, and had less than an honorable discharge, we now have, we have attorneys that we can refer them to. And they, and they have come to Middletown to our, our meetings and, and we will help them get those less than honorable discharge changed back into an honorable discharge.
So Councilman Pacino, the city offers a position at the senior center that is done by Laura Runting, so that seniors have one place to go that they know that they can go to get help with all types of services. They'll go to Laura for housing credit, for fuel assistance, for help with social security, Medicare. The veterans don't have a place in Middletown to go to get all of the information that we need. So the veteran support services are offering, if we have space, to provide that services. We could offer office hours so people know that that's the building to go to for one-stop shopping, for advice, for us to guide them into alcohol and drug addition referrals, to give family crisis and you reuniting services, for women veteran issues and counseling. We would be the people knowledgeable on how to direct them to get the services that they need rather than going to the phone book and trying to figure it out on their own. The city does this right now with seniors.
Yeah, that's where I was trying to get to because I'm totally familiar with the senior center because I chair it.
Right.
On the, to my question, David, again, you would need somebody. And do you have somebody or do you have a members that can seek navigation through these various sites that would be different than the other veteran organizations? Because I haven't heard that. That's all I'm just saying. And so you could probably work on.
Yes, we do. We both, both in, both in the Harry Ruffin Jr. American Legion posts. And, and, and then we expanded that capability or that ability to do that through the various members that we have on the corporation board.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
For, for instance, Councilman, if I may, Mayor, for instance, Councilman, one, one of the things that, that horses are used as, as a therapeutic for, for, for veterans. We have, we have a person that's a member of our board that, that has horses. And, and, and one of the programs that we would be able to offer is through, through her program is, is, is that therapeutic training for those veterans with horses. And that's right, that's right up here in Hartford.
Thank you very much. Are any other questions?
If I might just add just one thing, because I'm helping, I'm on the board as well, Leslie Blaser. And two things that I'm really excited about for this project and this property in particular is number one, not so much the banquet facility, but is all of the services that we'll be able to offer. And it's, everything is outlined in the proposal. And I'm sure too, as time goes on and we see different needs, we can always, you know, modify that and add other services too, but that's what I'm really excited about. And the other part as far as this building in particular is that not only is it in excellent condition and in an excellent location, but the fact that it has the ability to expand. So if ideally, if this really takes off and now we realize we're running out of space, there's room for us to grow. So that's the other appeal too, for this particular property is twofold, the condition and that ability to expand. Thank you.
Great. Just a quick, a quick question that I'll ask folks, sort of following up on Councilman Pacino. What, what will, will this be open during standard business hours? Just to ask that during, without, with no paid staff, will there, what will that, what will the hours look like for, for public being able to come into the building and, and access these services?
Yes, it will be staffed by volunteers and it will be staffed by the contracted book.
Your Honor, just, just like the American Legion now, the, the other American Legion posts in Middletown, it, it's, it's available to veterans and to the community 24 hours a day, seven, seven days a week. So if there's nobody physically there, but there will be phone numbers that, that the veterans or the veterans' family can contact us. And, and, and we'd be right in on the case. So, so it's a 24/7 operation.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And again, we'll, we'll review the materials internally and look forward to continuing the, the conversation. And thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I confirm that the proposal is in the hands of the committee or should I submit something in addition?
Task force members, have you received the full application? I believe that, that I do have it. Sounds, it looks like everybody.
We, we did receive it. Yep. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Bree is pointing out that it is also online in the, in the packet on the, on the city website. All right. Well, thank you very much. We have one more presentation. So thank you, everybody, for, for bearing with us on our busy agenda here. And we'll turn it over without further ado to the downtown business district. And just as always, let us, we'll, we'll start the timer for 15 minutes. We'll have some time for questions. And if you need sharing privileges, let us know. So DBD, over to you.
Can you hear me, first of all?
Yes, we can.
Wait, great. I'll make it brief because this is not anything that's complicated. You should have received the full application as well as some supporting documentation. So this was created out of the need we saw when the DBD, through COVID, as you all know, many businesses, including downtown businesses, were struggling. And we decided to do some smaller grants, $500 to $2,000. We were trying to visit with reopening, especially having to go to outdoor services in the nicer weather. And what came from that was that we discovered a lot of our businesses that were tenants were saying things like, you know, gee, I would love my landlord to paint our building, but they're saying, especially now with COVID, the funding isn't there, et cetera. And so then we started really paying attention to the facades and what was going on. And over 20 years ago, there was a joint effort with the city where they redid facades and had a matching grant. This grant's a little different. We're asking that it be 75/25. So the building owners would invest 25% and the grant would pay for the remaining 75%. And we're hoping that with a half a million dollars, which is really not a lot of money, you know, in, in the scope of these projects, and I'll get into that in a minute. We're hoping to do upwards of 10 projects, even if it's smaller things that can have a, a big impact. The refacing of a building with proper architectural elements, the purchasing of new awnings on some of these buildings is greatly needed. It's small things that make big impacts. And, you know, we thought about it and well, why now? Why with this funding? But with COVID came a lot of hurt in the retail and restaurant industry. And without a thriving, beautiful downtown, we all know that our city, it, it has a bigger effect and everyone could pay a price for that. So we started our commission, as you know, is made up of nine commissioners that are building owners, that are business owners. And so they felt this was really important at this time with developers coming to our downtown, wanting to do housing and get creative in the types of things they're bringing to our downtown. So we don't want things around those buildings to then fall into any further or more disrepair where they can't afford to fix them properly because of the last few years of COVID really impacting them. So that said, we have people who have started, if you've noticed the Lestrino Bridal's building, Hajar Development and Tom Ford have started to reface that building. And Tom asked me to share with you that that's costing him upwards of $185,000. And it's a big hit for their, their real estate business. And that is the point of this. You know, we tend to think of our building owners as sometimes being these wealthy people that we don't see. But in reality, they are, there are a lot of local people that own our buildings. Yes, there are some out of state people. But they are real estate developers that are in business and they need to have their businesses thrive. So we want each building to look beautiful for the next building so that they all share that value. So we included an area that goes beyond the DBD, even though we would want to run the grant for the city or the, with the funding. And it would be church to church, as we like to say, but it would go down to Decovan Drive and up to Broad Street and include the side streets, which Pam Steele will tell you. Tend to get a little bit forgotten when we're doing some of the things downtown and the DBD really makes an effort to include those side streets and make sure that all businesses can have some impact. So one of the questions we asked ourselves, and I know you're asking is, well, how does this impact, let's say, low to moderate income individuals or families? And we think it helps in a few ways. One, they would be providing projects that employ people, which we would give first preference to local workers always. As well as with housing downtown, which we already have low to moderate, we are getting some market rate. We would like them to live in an area that, you know, all the buildings can be maintained and be beautiful. And that, you know, wherever we live, we like it to be nice. We want it to look nice. So this would help with that as well. Now, I also want you to know that I, I've received a letter from Marie Colito, which you should all have. And when she was redoing her building, they uncovered this beautiful piece that was marching soldiers because the owner of the building was a veteran. Unfortunately, the cost to restore that properly was so astronomical for her, she simply couldn't do it. Our downtown is so unique and with redevelopment in the seventies, we really lost a lot of that. And I know we don't want to lose any more of that. So we want them, building owners, to do this better. We don't want them to just slap a coat of paint. We want them to restore it properly, to keep our downtown, to have that beautiful character that we all love. And we want to keep restoring. So that's a big piece of this is, sure, a building owner can say, well, I'm going to paint my building. But are you going to do it properly? Let us help you do it better so that things are restored properly. So the downtown keeps its character. So that's a big priority goal of ours is to target buildings that need the work and say, do you, can you do this if we help you and let us help you do it right? And how we would do that with this funding, as you saw in the budget, is hire a architect with some downtown knowledge and knowledge of municipal laws that could work with the economic development office, et cetera, to do things right, to do them properly, and to make sure we have the best benefit coming out of the grant. So with that said, I don't want to take up a lot more time. I know you're all tired. I know how meetings go. But I want to let you know that, for example, Amato's just got a quote on her awning of $24,000. And that's only if there's no problems with the underlying drainage that's there under the awning. And while Amato's is a very successful business, they still have to do business and they employ 30 plus people, et cetera. So it's been upsetting that, well, we can't do this right now. We have too many other priorities. So we want to help them better the facades that face Main Street specifically, or the side street that they're facing, so it'll be front facing, and improve it in a way that's better and keeps in character with the downtown. So I'm going to turn it over for questions because I, I don't think this is anything crazy and complicated. But, and I don't want to take up a lot of time. So you let me know if you have any questions that we can help you answer for this.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Any questions that folks have? Gene, go ahead.
Thank you, Sandra. Sandra, I, I just want to review, you probably said at the beginning, and maybe I missed it. So the money that, for this great project, we would augment the, the cost for, for, for the owners?
75% would be paid of the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We want them to have an investment, right?
Right, absolutely.
That we, you know, we could have done a 50/50 match, but given, we've seen a lot of these business owners and their struggles the last two years with COVID. So we felt the commission felt 75/25 might really motivate building owners to do something.
Right, right. Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Phil? You're muted, Phil.
Sandra, just, just real quick, as they apply for these grants, will it be the DBD that will review them to ensure that it falls in line with the general consensus of restoration and the types of things that they're going to want to do to get approval to move to get to 75%? We already know it's going to get to 25%.
Jen, our chair, would put a small committee together, which will include an architectural person that has downtown knowledge as well, as we're hoping. Economic development, Bobby, and either herself or a representative. And a commissioner or two who is, as you know, very familiar with and either owns buildings, has restored buildings themselves, et cetera. And they would together collaborate and decide the priorities and which ones we feel will have the biggest impact and, and, and have the best, you know, plans to go forward.
Perfect. Thank you. Great presentation.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Right? Well, thank you very much, Sandra and team. And we look forward to being in touch soon.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. We have next up discussion of pending applications. So I would love to just make sure that everybody is up to speed on where things are. So Greg, if I can turn it over to you at this point and, and the working group, if you could just give us an update on any recommendations coming out of the internal working group and where, just generally where we are.
So there's nothing else in the pipeline for the working group. The four presentations we just had will be the next four that we consider. We continue to meet weekly. For the task force as a whole, we have on deck, I think, another eight applications that will have to be scheduled for presentations. And recall that the deadline for submission is June 13th at four o'clock. So soon enough, we'll have a sense of what the entirety of the universe is. But right now, that's, that's our piece of it is the, the four we just heard and the eight in the pipeline. So the immediate order of business, I think, or at least one of your orders, is to figure out scheduling the remaining presentations. Certainly the eight that we have, but also try to anticipate what we don't have yet, but will have soon.
Okay. So in that, so with that being the case, we will, we'll get those scheduled in the, in the days to come. So we'll, we'll have some more applications that we anticipate getting before the, before that window closes. And then we will work with, with you all to get those on the schedule over the next couple of weeks.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Please, yes.
Yes. I guess maybe unless I've missed something, I don't think we've heard all of the applications that the subcommittee has reviewed. Has reviewed. I mean, there's been several presentations that have been made. I don't believe that we reviewed those.
Yes, I was gonna inquire about that next. So I know, I know that there were some pending applications that I think the task or the internal group has had its hands on. And recommendations have been made, but there have not, we have not put it on yet as a task force.
Bear with me. Let me pull up the rubric that we're using to track and we can maybe work through it together. Bear with me. Okay, hopefully you're able to see that. Yes. Hide these columns so we can.
Greg, can you send us updated one, the last one the working group got? We're at twenty-one. So if you could send it out to the working.
I surely will.
Thank you.
Yeah. So here's what I'm tracking. We have. I'm showing the task force has recommended funding on. The ones that are in this column. We have some follow-up questions on. A couple of the applications. I don't think we have. I don't think we've got anything back that we need yet on that.
Well, forgive me. Can someone remind me, I remember the task force at large voting on everything through. The ninth application, potentially the tenth, forgive me. But I don't recall us taking a group vote formally outside of the working group to move on any recommendations.
Yeah, we haven't had presentations yet from the from the internal group or or a vote on any of the, anything below. Item number ten. So the I think that these numbers recommending, the recommendations are from that internal working group. But we haven't heard, we, a larger group has not heard from from the review committee on that yet or voted. So that would be JDS Holdings, Community Health Center. Middletown Fire and Nora, I believe that's Nora Cupcake. So it sounds, all right, so we need to have that group. Get together and be prepared to make those, talk about those recommendations, I think, at the next, at the next meeting.
Okay, so I apologize for the confusion, just so that we're literally on the same page. We are tracking, then the working group would need to report back on. Number seventeen. Eighteen. Twenty. Twenty-one. Twenty-two. And twenty-four, plus if we're able to, the four that we just heard.
Yes, as well as any any follow. I I think also just the what the what the follow-up questions would need to be for. I I get that was determined these, that there would need to be follow-up questions, that we would need to determine rules for individual grantees. I think that those were recommendations from the smaller group, but none of that has been discussed with the with the task force yet. So.
Very good. So I'm going to modify this a little bit because, and I'll track the, because some of these have been funded by the council as well. So I'll try to track working group, task force and council expenditure recommendations or authorizations.
Forgive me, I I'm happy to make this as a more formal motion. I would have, I think it would benefit me at least if we handled the working groups recommendations. In a dedicated special meeting where we do not receive any presentations of existing of new applications. I feel like we're so far behind on moving the recent batch to the common council. That I'd love to just get that business out of the way in a short time period and advance it so the council can consider it for the next meeting.
I I think that that would be wise and I think that it would be, make sense to dedicate our next, our next gathering to that. So there's a need for a special meeting to be scheduled. We will schedule that.
Mayor, if I may, Greg, for the working group also. It will give. Some of the presentations that we initially are recommending. But they'll have an opportunity to come back due to issues that have developed in the meantime. Like we did with the big project on Main Street. And we had to raise some of the the grants, of the amount of grants due to, you know, different issues that arise. So I was happy to hear that. That's good. Excellent. Give us a little more work. And is it possible to color code these?
Yeah, and I guess the question that I have is that, if I may speak. What is, what does it mean by determine individual grantee? What does that mean?
That's something that the the working group, I think, came up with in their meeting that that we need to have, we need to have that presented to the to the larger task force. So I think that that the the answer to that question, I think, is that we'll we'll have to be discussed at the same meeting, you know, in the same setting that. All the other recommendations that that the working group is making will be discussed. Okay. Well, I think that that will, I think that also sort of covers approval process and timeline. That is something that we're gonna, we're gonna get together on internally and at our, at our special meeting when we, when we get the pending applications moved through. Get an update on where everything is exactly in the timeline in terms of past the council, pending council approval, pending full task force approval, or still waiting for a presentation.
And Mayor, if I might suggest, just because we are all gathered here together today, that sounds awfully. I stepped on your line there, sorry. We're all gathered here together today to maybe. Try to schedule a special meeting at this point, see if there might be a time that works for me, maybe two weeks hence, at eleven o'clock.
Date would that be, please?
That would be the twenty-second.
I'm going to be in New Jersey for the birth of my grandson. So I I could try to make it online depending. That's the day she's going in, so.
We do have a working group meeting scheduled a week from today. So I think that that would be wise to use that time between now and then to work with that group and make sure we get everything together. And we'll schedule that special meeting for that.
So we'll aim then for a special meeting of this group, June twenty-second at eleven AM. I'll get the notice out and.
Thank you very much. Any, can we do a quick report? Joe from Water and Sewer, if there's any, if there's any progress on that.
Thank you, Mayor. We have completed the investigation for Area Twenty-seven for Prime's portion of the project. We're going to be meeting with them to go over the findings on the on the study for the INI work. And hopefully have a probable cost for the construction dollars. I can see by all the application that there's not going to be any funding left for construction costs. So that'll end up going to bond referendum in November. And Wright Pierce has completed their TV inspection this week. They're finalizing that and we'll meet with them probably in a week or two. To go over their findings and an opinion of probable cost to do the construction side of the INI work for Basin Twenty-five and Twenty-six. We're still on hold from Sabre Brook Road. I haven't heard any new information from Cardinal or Public Works. But I know they had issues with easements and access agreements. So that's still kind of on hold. We do have two applications in the Bartholomew Road Water Booster Pump Station, which I had discussed earlier. We have an underground can station on the corner of Co Avenue and Randolph Road. That we're looking to replace as a six nineteen sixties vintage pump station with one renovation. We don't have permanent generator, so we do have issues when we lose power in that area to the community college, the neighborhood and the temple. So that's would be something that I'm still pushing forward to. And then with the next application that we put in was for the replacement of the Red Road Pump Station. So you'll see that in a presentation in the future. My concern was when we originally started talking about doing projects, we had split up everything to four categories. And we were looking at, you know, approximately five thousand per category. So I'm wondering how we're going to be proceeding with that because there'd be some, I'm assuming, that are going to be getting denied. Which like for the pause presentation that was denied. I'm just wondering how we're going to budget the categories and fund, fund the project. So that's something that I have concerns. Because that, whatever we can't fund, will have to go to bond in November. So just wanted to remind everybody that we were looking at, you know, categories of five thousand dollars approximately each. And how that is going to shake out. So.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
That, thank you for the report and and good question. And as 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 far as, you know, any decisions have been made. I, we are, we are still, as far as I'm concerned, operating with the same sort of parameters that we set out as a group. At the beginning of this process in terms of how we would divide up, roughly speaking, the the funds into different priority areas as defined by Congress. For ARPA, including water and sewer, including revenue replacement, including economic recovery and development and and meeting public health needs. And so we will review those at at our, at this, at this special meeting. We will review what those categories are and how much has been expended in those categories. As as many as folks know, a number of recommendations from the task force have been at a lower amount than the full amount that was requested. A number have been the full amount, a small number, I think maybe only one so far has been denied. And and the reason that we are halting the applications on June thirteenth is because, right, we do have more now than there are funds to allocate. We need to make those sort of competitive decisions based on the recommendations from the working. So unless the group intends to change those general parameters, I, as far as I understand, they have, they have not changed. But I think a good, I think an overview of where we are within those categories is something that we can work on for for the next meeting. All right. Thank you, everybody, for sticking around for the long meeting. Anything else for the good of the order? All righty. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. By Bree, second, by Jean. All those in favor, please say aye. All righty. Thank you, everybody.
Everyone, thank you.
We'll see you soon. Have a good rest of your day.
Yeah, stay healthy and safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Take care, everybody.